Welcome caller, October meeting together please. We welcome everybody here, we got a few good little hats tonight. But we got a lot of guests tonight too, and I appreciate them. So I have Kirk Colerham.
Brian Hearn.
Here.
Mary Jean Creaker.
Here.
Mitch Magnus.
President.
David Wilson. Brian O'Swold.
President.
Steve Kerpatrick.
President.
Joel Williams.
Here.
Dan Tyler.
President.
Okay, we have a young man from Kenya here tonight, he's with Eugene Saw. Neshon, now that, I can't speak Swahili, so... But he's gonna offer our prayer to us tonight, and we're welcoming him here to Harrison, Arkansas. And also after he does the prayer, we've got the Girl Scout troop 5137 will lead us in the pledge. So, Neshon, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, sir. Come right on up here.
Name is this one? Yes, let's bow down and pray. Father, we thank you, everlasting Father, we glorify your name because of this wonderful evening. We are gathered here, Lord, because of your great love. Thank you for taking care of us, oh Lord, from all our daily duties, and now the day is over, but we know that your mercies are always everlasting. Lord of lords, we thank you, we lay away all our understandings, we lay aside all human efforts, so that your wisdom, oh God, may infill us, so that we may walk and serve with your fear. We pray that the saving king of kings will show yourself as God in our midst. We pray that you give us peace and understanding, oh God, we come at your service with peace or contribution in any way. We pray that, Lord of glory, there will be peace of mind and sovereignty as your name is being exalted and being glorified in this place. We honor you, Lord, as we start, and we honor you to the end, for the glory and honor of your name, in the name of Jesus Christ we pray and believe. Amen.
Thank you. Ladies, if you could go right on up here. Stand right there in front, and turn around and face us. That way, okay? Anytime you're ready.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with never-ending justice for all.
Thank you ladies. Also tonight, we have with us a young man that I think got promoted, he's moved out of Newton County, and he's moved up in God's country in Boone County, I hate to say that, but Mr. Jeff Dazort, he's working with the paper now, and he's taking Jane's place, and thank you.
Good to be back.
Yeah. Okay, you have in front of you the minutes of September 28th, and I'll entertain a motion for approval.
So, who's?
Second.
Motion second, in discussion. There being none, all is favor by eye.
Aye.
All opposed, same? Motion taken. Okay, we'll get down in our partner reports. I think the only one we got on here is Luke, and he's gonna get, you know, Luke kinda pulled his hair out, he don't have much hair to pull out, and I've been throwing up and all this other stuff, and he's got some, some figures for us, and they're very rough, I will say right now.
Let me go home and give some of these things out. These literally were completed about five minutes ago, the initial budget plan. It is a deficit budget as of right now. Everything's been submitted, the mayor hasn't even seen the final copy yet, so...
That'd be good.
The hardest part obviously was recalculating some salary figures. As of right now, we have a 2% quota in there with a 1% raise for non-uniformed employees. Uniformed employees still are receiving their step raises, as was indicated and approved by the council. So that is in there. I've recalculated retirement and everything else. So right now, the biggest number, everybody's wondering, is what's general fund? And right now, it's sitting at about $220,000 deficit. That being said, we had to reduce our franchise fees by about $200,000. So that's a good chunk of it right there. And that's just because people aren't, you know, using their landlines anymore, that's where a lot of it comes from, cable TV, a lot of that's where we got some of those numbers. So with that decreasing, we're gonna lose that much revenue. I also looked at revenues for September, that's when Hobby Lobby came in, we thought, we didn't know what it would be, really wasn't much different from last year at this time, there was about a thousand dollar difference. So, nothing to really scream and jump up and down and write home about, but I figured y'all were probably curious about that, so I wanted to report on that. And then my other biggest thing is health insurance. Right now, we've got a couple proposals on the table. Are we talking about that later at all?
Yes, it's on the dinner, but if you wanna go ahead and, we can move that up more aggressively.
It's up to you. If you would like to, I can go right into that. Alright, so we have a proposal from the municipal league, and we did send out a survey with our employees, we tend to do that every time, and that is the one that is selected after getting our quote back from United Healthcare. United Healthcare was 24% higher, which amounted to about $1.2 million in just health insurance, is a little under that. And in total, the municipal league is gonna be about $690,000. So, when you're talking about $500,000 difference, you're not really comparing that, just the numbers there. So, we did get a couple other self-insurance quotes, one with the same company that the hospital uses. However, they came back, they were just underneath our United quote for our maximum cost, and if, well, everybody knows the difference between self-insurance and regular health insurance, but you pay up to a maximum. Go ahead, come on in. But you pay to a maximum, so that way you're covered, if everything goes wrong, you have to cover that much. Now, they don't expect you to incur that much cost, they expect you to incur about 75% of the cost, which, with our self-insurance cost being about 1.15, like I said, just underneath that United, you're still looking at an expected cost of $800,000. So, and that's, again, you have to fund to the max, so you still have to put out that 1.1 million dollars, and if you hit the number you expect to hit, you have that $300,000 sitting in a bank for next year. But it is restricted at that point for health insurance. I also got another quote for $855,000. It's another self-insurance, with the same deductibles that we have now, with United Healthcare. Everything's pretty much the same across the board that way. So you're not talking about as much money, but you are gonna be talking some money there. There are some big differences between municipal league and the self-insurance quote that we have. Namely being for municipal league, you're gonna pay a copay, plus you're gonna pay 25% of the visit cost, whereas if you go now, you would pay a $25 copay, and that's it. So that, on the back end, is gonna be more expensive. You're probably gonna be, if you go in for a broken arm, you're looking at paying probably a couple hundred dollars when you just go see the doctor. Whereas otherwise, if they have that machine available, you're only gonna pay the 25 with United Healthcare. Another big difference, the $4,000 deductible with what we've got now, and with the self-insurance, and municipal league is $500. So that is also a very big difference. Obviously, the family plan, it's $500 per member with the municipal league, I do not know that that has a cap depending on how many family members you have. However, it would take eight family members to reach the one...
Six, one...
Six. Alright, so that's $3,000 would be your total family deductible versus $8,000 or something. $6,000 for the family? Okay. So if you have 12 kids, you would have $6,000 deductible possibly, if every single one of them met that deductible, so that's...
There's a problem if you got 12.
So there's just a few of them, a few differences. Urgent care, it's $75 for municipal league, it's $20 plus 20%, again, or excuse me, 20% plus $20 for municipal league, 75 for United Healthcare. So, again, self-insurance, or self-funded plan. So I kinda leave it up to you, I don't know, I believe the mayor has the recommendation of going with municipal league. The employees have not seen the other self-funded plan, so I can't say that they wouldn't have chose that. However, a lot of people are looking at bottom line here, it's a savings across the board to the city and to the employee, except for our employee plus one people. Well, I just spoke a ton, maybe all that makes sense, maybe it doesn't...
The survey came back comparing United Healthcare versus municipal league only.
Yes.
And the results of that survey were...
Were, United Healthcare 19, municipal league 71.
About 80%, 75, 80% there. Every employee I talked to only said municipal league, not one of them said they had broken the... Your employee plus ones, which is probably a lot of those 19s, their rates are actually going to go up. The single, people that have single coverage and the family coverage go down.
Their rate is going up regardless of which plan we go.
Oh yeah, that is true.
90 cents difference.
Yeah. So it doesn't, from that, it's a war.
That is true.
So I don't know if they really did, did... That has really been real important.
Well, you know, actually, we looked at all this, and believe it or not, this is something that comes up every year, they drop back every year. This league has offered a few more things, they've got a few more people on board up here with their, with their plan, and that helps too. I think they got, what, in this area, 439 people that signed up on it, something like that. Anyway, all the people around, all the doctors in the hospital, everything are with them. But after we got the survey back, we probably knew how that was gonna turn out. My recommendation, well, actually, it's gonna save, what, 200? Going to this league, it'll save the city like $280,000, something like that, but anyway, we had municipal league in 13, and we got out of it, we had some complaints. After talking to the municipal league, they swear up now, of course, they're selling the product also, and they want us to come on board. I really made an executive decision, and we're, we've already contacted municipal league. Right now, what I'd do, if I could get the blessing of the council, that I can sign that contract. I have not signed the contract with them yet, but if the council has no objections to me signing a contract with them, I will sign it.
Municipal league is the numbers that we have in the budget that we spoke to you about.
I'm following that, I make a vision that the mayor would be able to enter into a contract with municipal league. Is that what that...
I have a motion second, any further discussion?
One of my concerns with the insurance each year, and I said this, is that grid that we put in place at risk, we have insurance costs that exceed a certain percentage. Looking at, we're looking at either 10 or 15, I think 15 is what we set it on, not 10. So if we keep having these increases, I hope it'll find everybody, that fits our grid and risk if we don't control those costs.
I don't know with this quote from municipal league compared to this year, we didn't, what is, what are the figures what we spent this year?
$110,000.
So we're actually...
$110,000.
I understand that, but what I'm saying is, is these costs continue to escalate each year, we need to be proactive and make sure that we're, on the front end, we're doing what's in the best fiscal good sense.
I would like to, if I could piggyback on top of that, I would like to ask the council to approve the wellness program expenditures as well, it's about $1,400 a month, but that's how we're gonna get a hold of all this stuff, is by actually getting people to participate in that wellness and getting educated on their health risks.
Okay, you know that sheet we passed out two weeks ago? We throw that sheet in the trash. We cannot use that.
We cannot punish someone for not being on board.
Yes.
Now, we might have a different plan, that I might be coming back to you with at committee meeting. That will change a few things, but we cannot punish people for not being on board with a wellness program.
I would say that we probably need to wait till we see figures on the wellness plan and see the plan before we go down.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay, I have a motion on the table, any president you got there? There being none, all is favor by eye?
Aye.
All opposed, same? Motion taken.
One big thank you, I don't know if you guys know this, but Mayor Cheryl actually got us these rates. I know he doesn't like...
Sit down.
I know he doesn't like to have it near this, but I have no idea why municipal league gave us these rates, they're the one lowest, if not the lowest, in the state. And so, his relationships down at the state level has really paid off, especially when it came down to the municipal league health insurance.
We all wanna be healthy, it really has nothing to do with me, 'cause we're working on this wellness program, and we're gonna get off. You know, we're, our aging, and where the bulk of a lot of that expenditures come from is from people my age, so it is, it is what it is. But thank you councilmen, thank you Luke. Did anybody got any questions for Luke though?
When will we get the copies of the vote, are you gonna hand us out in the minutes since you just now got them?
Well, I'll probably email them out next week, early next week, after I show it to the mayor, and he's able to look over it, and the, I think we'll probably have a group meeting of the department heads.
Okay, that is our preliminary, it's our, obviously, that's not what you're...
Well, actually, actually, you may get the final verdict after I sit down with department heads, you may get the final verdict.
So are we looking at any adjustments at all for that $220,000?
Yeah, we've talked, well, like I said, he just got this, first figure I didn't like at all, so he went down there and repented, and it's come down a little bit, but it still hasn't come down what we want.
Okay, I'm just asking, I know you just, you haven't seen it, so I don't know.
Well, actually, he didn't talk, you know, we dropped a lot of revenue off, believe it or not, and it is what it is, so. We want, this budget could probably be a more realistic budget, 'cause we've been basing our revenue on the percent of increase, and we've looked at every line item this time, and we can't do it that way, so we're taking a realistic look at the budget.
We budgeted our sales tax at 99% of expected revenue for 2017. That's how we did that. We don't wanna budget high, obviously, so that's, that's how the sales tax numbers come back. Now, that increases sales tax revenue, but there's other stuff that increased also, wages, other stuff like that.
Franchise fees dropping.
Right, and that's the big thing.
Yep. But we haven't met, last, what, three years, our expectations on...
We actually budgeted close to a million dollars when I first started for franchise fees, and slowly went down to 900,000. Like last year was in the 850,000, and this year, it's almost by 700, it's almost a 700,000. So in five years, it's dropped 300,000 dollars.
Better get him a landline and a new TV. Okay, yeah, good luck on that, yeah, okay. All right.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, I got a thing. I know I haven't been here in a while, but I have a... Before you go past...
Okay, alright.
I just wanted the council to know, we have all the press boxes replaced, they're up and finished, and the light poles are in. I dropped the ball, didn't have the pictures that Brian wanted me to bring tonight, so I'll bring them for committee meeting next month, so we'll have those up on the screen of what we've got done. The only thing we haven't finished on that project is taking the old press boxes down, so we're gonna start on that as soon as possible. But all the safety issues have been addressed that we talked about in 17, so that's where we're at on that.
Well, the big press boxes, I've noticed out there, you didn't build those for tall people, you kinda have to, when you go under there?
We can only drive the posts so far down the ground before we have our, you know, before we get all our electrical lines and stuff, so it's pretty, pretty crazy if I find them.
They're nice, they are nice.
And we actually centered them behind the whole plate now, and set on top of the doyote, so they're really nice, so I appreciate you guys. I just wanted to let you know where we are on that, so. That's all I had, Mayor, sorry.
Thank you, thank you, that's all. Okay, we have with us tonight, the East group here, and who's representing them in these groups? Who's? Alright, ladies, come right up here in front now to introduce yourselves. Come on up here, don't be shy. Excuse me? Come on up here, right up here in front of the mic. All of you, now, don't be, don't be hiding back here. Okay, one at a time, I want you, I want you all to introduce yourselves, alright?
I'm Rainie Tolliver.
I'm Elise Bell.
I'm Allison Wacus.
And I'm Hannah Hill.
Mr. O'Swold, could you, since they're smaller there, could you adjust that for them, please? Great, great. Alright, who's gonna be the spokesperson tonight? Do we have several people gonna speak on this program, or you're wanting to present?
Yes.
Okay, step right up there.
Hi, I'm Rainie Tolliver, and this is Elise Bell, and our project is sidewalks through Harrison. We need sidewalks for many reasons, and these are just a few, but to me, the most important reason is for safety. We, our idea was originally a large loop of sidewalks that connects all through Harrison and goes by many important locations in our town, like the schools, sports complexes, and other restaurants and businesses. But we realized it's really big, so we decided to start with a smaller section that goes from Industrial Park Road to McDonald's on Main Street. The cost estimate for the sidewalk would be roughly $100,000, but this price could increase or decrease throughout the budget. This is a picture of the sidewalk that is during construction and after construction on Dan LeBeard Highway in Tampa, Florida. The story behind this sidewalk is, Dan LeBeard Highway is a six-lane highway with five-foot shoulder, and most cars don't obey the speed limit. People were actually using the sidewalk before construction finished, and now that they've finished the sidewalk, it is so much safer to use. Roughly 4,500 people die annually in the US from pedestrian and traffic crashes, which 88% of these deaths can be preventable by adding sidewalks. Statistics also show that pedestrian and traffic crashes are two times more likely to happen on a road without sidewalks. We've made a map to show where we want our sidewalks to be, and we've been using our GIS 2 pair. This is the map, it has all the layers we have on it.
Where are you wanting to put it?
Help.
Yes, this... This is our short-term goal, this is Industrial Park Road to McDonald's on Main Street. The top is Industrial Park Road, and the bottom of the red line is McDonald's. This is our long-term goal, which is the large loop of sidewalks connecting all around Harrison, and is about 26 miles long. These are all the locations we want to have on our map. The bikes that are blue are schools, the bikes in red are sports complexes or sports facilities, the bikes in white are colleges, the bikes in black are other places like the airport or the hospital.
We're gonna have to have our IT guy...
We're gonna have to. I thought we were paying for IT.
We've got ours, it's the operator's station.
Are we alright, girl?
First, we need support from you. We can't do anything before we get support from you. After that, we need ideas for funding, and we need suggestions such as grants or city or state funding that can help us accomplish this goal. Last, we work to build the sidewalks, and there are more steps in between this, but these are just the biggest, most important steps. This is our contact information, and if you have any questions, you can ask.
Cheryl, sure you want your phone numbers out there? Okay, good, good, good.
They got ours too.
But anyway, okay, what are you asking from the council in support? To start, to like start the McDonald's to Industrial Park, is that what we're looking at?
Yes, we need support to start working with other people to get funding and build the sidewalks.
Okay, I know y'all come and present to me, so I got a little hit start on everybody. And actually, I talked to Mr. Phillips, our public works director, about it, he said we could probably work towards going maybe to McDonald's to our bridge out there on Main Street, that bridge may create a problem at this time, but I can't say the city has the funding, but will we be in support of you trying to get the funding? Oh, definitely, definitely we'd do that. But I'm speaking too much, is the council people, wanna step in here a little bit? Anybody wanna question the young ladies? They've got her all down there.
Have they seen any of the information as far as grants, or anything, any ideas, contacts that they're working on?
We have not yet, we actually, that's another reason why we're here, we're wondering if you have any insight as to where we would get the funding.
Mr. Phillips, you got any ideas where they can go?
Outside of city funds, I mean, we'd be looking at transportation alternative program grants through the Arkansas Highway Apartments. Kind of, that's the, remember those Safe Rites to School programs, a lot of that would be more into, that would be an opportunity, you know, there's always private organizations out there, but they're a little hard to find, and, and funding, especially with the... And even, even if you get into the transportation alternatives grant money, there's still gonna have to be a match from somebody, typically, that would be the municipality that's making the choice.
I do have a question, why did you stop at McDonald's? Why did you not include Burger King?
We could expand either way, we just thought this would be a good starting point to work towards. We could add on more, it wouldn't be a big, one-time, one-fund, it would be a multiple parts through different times to eventually connect them all together.
Well, I was just curious, because you had this service station there, and then you have those business, y'all did an excellent job.
I'd like, I'd like to see, yeah, just like...
There's another presentation. That's the one we wanna have, God.
That house, the Hope Garden, you had, did we spoke to down low on that one?
Miss Hatch was supposed to send it to...
I just got the wall, is that all you got?
Yeah.
Mary Beth, yeah.
Okay, girl, we're gonna, can we go through without the slide? We didn't get the slide.
You know you're all gone? Someone come over here, come on. Just step right over here, just come up here. Mr. Magnus is up again?
This might have raised him.
Mr. Mayor, I really appreciate Mr. Wilson, but I'd like to reconsider hiring him if we had...
him if we had, we need him to help us.
Is there less pressure out there, David?
Yeah.
Well, this technology does draw a little bit of attention out there.
Still valuable, huh? Presentation. Maybe while we're waiting, I can show some pictures of this.
It looks great, I can't wait to show you in the committee room, it looks great.
While they're doing that, while they're doing that, let's go ahead and give these ladies right here a least a vote of approval for them to pursue their sidewalk issue. That one's standing behind me.
I'll make a motion if you approve the East initiative sidewalk.
Okay, I have a motion in a second. If you're gonna pick this then later, but anyway, any discussion on it?
It's gonna be probably unanimous.
Okay, all of the favor by eye?
Aye!
All of the opposed saying. Congratulations, girls, we'll get behind you, alright?
I say we send them down and see if they go or can turn them away. You could turn them away.
Getting close.
Hey, we're not stressed out?
We're good. Take that USB out of the bottom of the house.
Didn't work worth it.
Yeah, alright ladies.
So, I'm Hannah Hill and I'm Allison Wagus and our project is the House of Hope Fruit and Vegetables. This idea originated as wanting to plant fruit trees around the Harrison and it started with the idea of wanting to help the people that needed it. And after that, we thought winter's coming, why not make a greenhouse? Later, we decided to talk to Bill Knight from House of Hope to see how he would like it, like how he would like the idea if, since we're hoping to build by House of Hope. And then we decided, why not do a new space in the vegetable garden? And these are some issues we couldn't counter and reasons why we might be approved.
One, raccoons, because they might come into the garden and just tear up the whole place and then our hard work will probably go down the drain, so. Second, rats, because rats will probably just eat the fruits and vegetables, especially the disease-related, especially the disease-related ones, because, well, we could just like either nibble or rub on the fruits or vegetables and it'll make, and it'll make them inedible.
Like there are some rats out there that just carry diseases and sometimes it doesn't take much to transport food.
Third, fruit flies, we can't really avoid this issue, so it's best if we were to just look out for them. Fourth is theft, people could climb over the fence and just steal all the fruits and vegetables. Fifth is vandalism, sometimes you can't really avoid this issue because some people might have bolt cutters and just like destroy the fence, so, yeah.
And sixth is rabbits. The fact that we are hoping to also have carrots in this garden, rabbits might be able to get in if they don't fence, some fences, they might squeeze through, they could get in and eat the vegetables, but some vegetables might be spared. There's actually a picture of the type of roof we would like to have on it, it's basically metal framework and then a chart click over it, that's just a basic idea that we can have. Next are the main purposes we have versus the main purpose to benefit those in need and then there's also, we want to make sure that there is an abundant amount of growth and harvest, along with the fact that someone could take someone else's plants that they grow and we do not want that, so we actually have a solution to this.
We're hoping to make four-by-four individual gardening beds so that everyone can have sixteen fruits and vegetables, because if we were to have one huge gardening bed, people might fight over which on the earth might be theirs and someone else could probably just take someone else's.
Next are some of the plants we would like to have. With apples, since apples grow on trees, in some big cities, they have the trees that have the metal fencing around the base of it and that does not restrict the growth, so if we found a way to do that, then maybe we could have some trees outside of the garden. And we would also like some carrots, possibly blueberries, same thing for pines because pines grow on trees. And oranges, might not be one of the main things that we grow, but we would like to have them, along with some of those other papers. We put in a picture of fruit because that has some of the fruits that we might be able to have, like there's watermelon, we might be able to have that, but fruits like bananas and pineapples, they, I'm not sure, but I'm pretty sure they have to be in tropical climates to grow. Next are the kids, so if someone comes to the garden and they have kids with them, some people's kids can like not, can just not focus and they run around and there being a way to make sure they could not play around in the garden bed or anything like that, so we're thinking maybe we could have a swing or a jungle gym outside of that garden and some parents like to keep an eye on their kids, so since this fencing is going to be a change room, we, that won't really be a problem. Next is questions, you have any questions?
So I assume you want to locate this near the House of Hope, right?
Yeah, we went over to House of Hope and we saw this really nice spot, it's a pretty big area, it's behind House of Hope and Bill even said that he liked that idea.
I haven't talked to Bill about it, but anybody would be bored, the only thing is you can't build in that area, it's perimeter structure, right? Fence wouldn't be an issue down there.
And thank you, Dennis.
You ladies get with Mr. Knife and have him contact with me so we can kind of work this out a little bit, what's going on. Now, you will be real tall when those contrays get up. I'll probably go up here, but we appreciate you ladies and I don't know why we wouldn't support you in your project. I'll entertain a motion for support. I have a motion in a second, any further discussion? Everybody then, all in favor by eye?
Aye!
All opposed saying, thank you all. What's your call?
They're getting the picture, ladies.
Oh, picture, okay, great. Alright, we're gonna move down in the committee reports. McWain, do you have anything?
Not tonight.
Mr. Magnus?
I think Mr. Iger covered it all.
Oop, I did scratch his name, kill you up there, but anyway. Mr. Gregor?
No, we're...
Okay, Mr. Oliver, I think we do have one thing for you.
Does it bring the bid waiver from committee to vote for tonight so that Wade can go ahead and proceed with that, how he seconds out, boring on how he set a shot for that one.
This would be a single read? So it'll be put on one and that would be the only read, of course.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to put it on one and only read.
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion in a second, any discussion on this ordinance? Everybody then, I have a clerk call roll, please.
Dana Taylor?
Yes.
Brian Herring?
Yes.
Mary Jean Krieger?
Yes.
Mitch Magnus?
Yes.
Ryan Oswald?
Yes.
Keith Kirkpatrick?
Yes.
Joe Williams?
Yes.
An ordinance dispensing with the bid requirement for Red Rock construction.
Yeah, I'll entertain a motion for adoption. I have a motion in second for adoption, any discussion? Everybody then, all in favor by eye?
Aye!
All opposed saying? We don't need merch on this. Hey, Mr. Oliver, do you have anything else?
I have no, thank you.
Mr. Taylor, I think you do have one.
This will also be a single read ordinance, so if the deals with Mr. Blackwood wanting to eliminate the plat he has for land that is just west of the FedEx property and I guess it would be just south of, um, Home Depot? And again, this is a request by a citizen, he doesn't have any immediate development plans, but he would like to kind of basically clear the slate for whatever future might be for this property. Be appropriate for a one read on this particular ordinance by title on this.
Yeah, I'll entertain a motion to put it on one and only read.
I'll make a motion.
I make a motion, I'd be...
Your second is due in a second?
Sorry, I didn't hear, I was listening.
Okay, well, I have a motion. I have a motion in a second, any discussion on this? I'll have a clerk call roll, please.
Dana Taylor?
Yes.
Brian Herring?
Uh, yes.
Mary Jean Krieger?
Yes.
Mitch Magnus?
Yes.
Ryan Oswald?
Yes.
Keith Kirkpatrick?
Yes.
Joe Williams?
Yes.
An ordinance to abandon the plat of the Blackwood Division subdivision and all rights of lay-in easements located within the boundary of the platted subdivision in the city of Harrison Boone County, Arkansas.
Hey, I entertain a motion for adoption.
Some moves?
Second.
I have a motion in second for adoption, any discussion on that? Everybody then, all in favor by eye?
Aye!
All opposed saying? Mr. Taylor, do you have anything else? Do we need it? By the way, do we need a look on this one? Okay. Alright. Okay, we will move down into new business continued and that being, uh, point of a council member, but before we get started. I have a young gentleman, Clayton Jernigan, that wants to put his name in for that position also, and I have talked to him today on the phone and I told him I would give him three minutes for his presentation and a timeframe for question and answers. And Mr. Jernigan, if you wanna come forward, please.
Well, I certainly appreciate the opportunity to be here, I appreciate your time. You know, I've spent a lot of time in prayer and meditation on this decision and that's why I've come at the eleventh hour, honestly. I know it's gonna be, you know, the I is gonna be dotted tonight and the T is gonna be crossed, so I know a lot of you have probably made a decision. However, within my decision-making, you know, I've really been thinking about a lot about politics here lately and, you know, what I see lately in politics, we see a lot of individuals that like to put their name on what they've done and like to put their face out there on what they've done and say, "Look at what I've accomplished." This is not my intent. Instead, what I wanted to do, I wanted to come in because I have been blessed with very beautiful daughters, two of them, my oldest is three years old and my youngest is seven months. What I wanted to do is I wanted to come in and help sustain a community for them. My wife and I have been blessed to live here, honestly, it's a blessing to live here. And here's the thing, is that if we do not bind together in unison and have a strong community leaders behind us, we're not going to have a Harrison, Arkansas. We're not gonna have jobs here, we're not gonna have an infrastructure to support us and I don't want that for my daughters. Instead, I want them, whenever they grow up, I want them to look out and say, "I wanna raise my family here as well." So that's why, after my prayer meditation, that's why I'm here tonight. Because I feel like that, I don't know if I'm gonna be the best councilman that Harrison's ever seen before, I can't guarantee that, that's impossible. However, if you were to ask my colleagues and my family, they'll tell you that I always put my best effort into something. And I believe that we need younger people to get involved with their government and that's why I'm here, because I wanna see what's best for my children, I wanna see what's best for our community. I could get up here and speak on my experience, but to be honest, if I took my entire life, I would not equate to the other candidate's work experience, more than likely. However, what I can speak on is that I have a passion for our community and I wanna see it flourish. I have a vision that I wanna see us still be here within the future. I appreciate all you guys do and what I wanna do is I wanna join with you and continue that growth. I certainly appreciate the time to speak and certainly I'll entertain any questions.
Where are you employed now?
Currently, I'm employed up at the North Arkansas Regional Medical Center, I've been there for just about sixty days now, I work in information technology and so I get offers all the time to go different places and I've been blessed enough to come back to Harrison, I was working for a company based out of Hollister, I was having to travel quite a bit and so the position came open, I've been blessed enough to come back to Harrison and drive about seven minutes away now.
If you can get up that hill.
That's right, that's right.
What's your address?
One hundred Chelsea Circle. All of you may remember the sinkhole, our property joins that.
Okay, anybody else have any questions, Mr. Jernigan? Thank you, Mr. Jernigan.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move forward with this. In committee meetings, I did mention certain things we can do tonight on this issue and this point, we can go into executive session or somebody can make a motion for a point or right at this time, but that decision is up to you all, it's not up to me. So I'll entertain either one of those motions.
I make a motion, we're going to a session since we have this new candidate, I'll accept that motion.
Okay, I have a motion, we're going to executive session, there being no discussion on it, all in favor by eye?
Aye!
All opposed saying? We will go into executive session, I will not enter the, our chamber here, what we'll do is we'll all leave and go into the mayor's office and we'll have that discussion in there, we will come out, hopefully we'll... Uh, we will come out hopefully with, uh, a candidate, so, uh, at this time, you all can be in recess. I will ask, uh, police chief if he will stand the door. At least the mayor's door, anyway. Okay, we will resume our regular meeting at this time and come out of executive session. Okay, I will leave it up to the council. Do I hear a motion on, on the table?
I'll make a motion that we elect John Ove, in his opening position.
A second.
Have a motion to elect John Ove in sec- by acclamation? Any discussion on this? There being no discussion, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, aye? Mr. Ove, you're now a councilman.
Thank you.
At this time, I'll have to ask you to come up forward, please. In your place. Just a little legal stuff here we have to take care of and, uh, I want to get you seated tonight, so, uh, I want to have to ask you to do the pledge, not the pledge of allegiance, to the local office, and if you want to read it there, I'll, I'll, uh, give it to you.
Might change his mind, don't blame you.
Okay, would you please raise your right hand? Aye, John Ove?
Aye, John Ove.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
Support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Arkansas?
Constitution of Arkansas.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties?
Faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of Alderman Ward Two, position two.
Position, Alderman?
Well, we got it wrong. We do got it wrong, but Ward Two, position two.
Ward Two, position two.
On, upon which I am now about to enter.
Upon which I'm now about to enter.
And your turn will start right now and it will end on January first. Congratulations. You can hand that sheet back over there.
You meant January first, 2019?
Yeah. It is, good, that's yours.
Excuse me, I left my.
I get it.
You gonna get it?
Yes, sir.
Plant on my desk right there.
Yes, sir.
I got a lot of hand notes on there. Okay, we have with us tonight some people from the Grace City Church and American Speaks and, uh, Mr. Mike Bishop and Toni, Mrs. Toni Rose from, uh, the, uh, American Speaks. Am I right on that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we have Mr. Justin Goff from Grace City here with us and at this time, you ladies and gentlemen could come forward and, uh, make your presentation.
Good evening, everybody and Mr. Mayor and members of the council. We thank you all for giving us just a little bit of your time tonight. Uh, I am Mike Bishop with an American Speaks and we are a faith-based organization. Our mission is primarily made up of working, uh, in the avenue of, of protecting family values and wholesome communities. And, uh, we're here tonight really just to say thank you all for the job that you do in protecting our communities and especially when I look and see the, the children that have been here with us tonight, that's always encouraging because I'll do a good job of keeping us safe. And, uh, I think in the job that you all are in, you don't hear those thanks quite often enough. Uh, one of the many projects that an American Speaks has conducted over the last couple of years is the American Patriots Bible for Legislators Program. And we partnered with a gentleman out of Atlanta, Georgia. He's Dr. Richard G. Lee. He is a pastor, a theologian, a study of the Constitution, American history, and he compiled a Bible called the American Patriots Bible where he took about three hundred historical accounts of American history and the role that the Bible and of course, our belief in God as a nation, uh, played in the founding of our country. And so, in a way of showing our appreciation to you all and, and around the country, we've been doing this program now. We've had some success with it through several states. Uh, but in the, in the process of doing that, Justin, a pastor at Grace City Church approached me about wanting to provide these and help us make it available to present you all as a thank you gift, really a district service to it. So, uh, we have some information. I'm gonna pass this around and I'm gonna turn the program over to Justin.
Mr. Mayor, council, thank you guys, ladies. Thank you for what you do. And really, this is just a way, we're trying to be creative, just to say, hey, how can we say thank you? We appreciate the, um, influence we have in this town. Um, we, my family moved here in nineteen ninety-one and I was ten. And so, you know, when I claim a hometown, I claim Harrison. And so, uh, I just want to say thank you. A couple of things about this here. This is the American Patriots Bible, which all y'all will get. And, uh, you understand what revisionist history is doing. And, uh, you know, this is kind of an interesting gift. Um, it's kind of a subtle way of me just saying, hey, um, as we move forward, decisions that are made on behalf of the city, uh, and our place in the state of Arkansas, and how that affects, uh, future generations, I think there's a key here. Not just God's word, but connection back to our founding fathers. Uh, there was a, uh, senator, his name was Daniel Patrick Monahan and he served under several presidents as far back as Kennedy and then as recent as Clinton. Well, somebody asked him, because he was quite the philosopher. He was a democratic man, but quite the philosopher. And someone asked him once, "Will America last another two hundred years?" And his, his answer was very interesting and this is why this gift is significant. This was his answer. He said, "No, America will not last another two hundred years and here's why." He said, "The moment that the chaos, the disrespect, the, um, the rejection of the rule of law, lawlessness," he said, "As soon as that hits the Midwest, America will fail." Well, folks, we are in the Midwest and this is what I like about what, uh, Mike and Tony stand for is we are fighting for values. So I don't see this necessarily as a defense, a lesson in defense. I see this as a lesson in our offense. And if I could make an appeal to the council today, it's that I think we can hold the Midwest and America will stand. So, thank you guys for everything that you do.
And, uh, what we will do, Mr. Overall, we'll pass those down and, uh, Chief, I think those, you pass those down for us. When, uh, when council meeting is over tonight, we have, uh, one of the Bibles for each and every one of you and we want you to be sure and pick that up. Uh, Christine's got those for the, uh, department heads that are not here with us tonight. And again, we just thank you for your service and for taking a stand for wholesome family values and, and keeping our, our community safe and the good work that y'all do for us. Thank you all so much. God bless.
Okay, we want to go into more or less my comments. We have on there next month's meetings, uh, and unless everybody wants to be here bringing turkey, well, we got turkey. Lady turkey around here, but anyway, I knew that was coming. So, uh, what's your all's pleasure for next month?
Why don't we just have it the night of committee, you just don't have committee, if that counts?
We can do both, believe it or not. We can have a meeting. You want to go ahead and just have a combination on the ninth?
Sure.
Luke, is that gonna get you?
Um, I just asked that you look over the budget before you come to that meeting so we can have a formal and educated discussion on it.
Okay, if, if that's a pleasure of the council, I'll entertain a motion that we have our regular council meeting on the ninth of November.
So moved? Second.
I have a motion in a second. Have a regular council meeting on the ninth.
You want to split your time as far as what starts at six?
Do you want to, say we want to come in at five thirty or anything? Then you might want to come at five thirty? Beautiful.
Yeah, I can meet here at five thirty.
So we can have a committee meeting at five thirty and then start the regular council meeting at six?
Sure. I'll just go in at six.
Okay, 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 okay. I have a motion on the floor to change the council meeting. We won't change the time, but we will set the committee meetings. You all can kind of set those, so. Any further discussion on it? Everybody now, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, aye?
It's before you go aye.
Okay.
Jeff, five thirty now.
Five thirty.
We'll have committee meetings at five thirty and then the regular council meeting at, at six. Okay, I have one other thing here actually on the agenda and that's, uh, CATPC position came open and, uh, Matt's not here tonight. I didn't say he wasn't gonna be here, but, uh, Nathan Patton had to leave that, his position on that and, uh, they, uh, produced, uh, Mr. Thomas Horner. It sat on there many years prior. And I'll submit Mr. Thomas Horner's name to fill Nathan Patton's position till seven, twenty nineteen.
I'm making a motion to approve that.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion on it? Yes. There being no discussion, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, aye? The only thing I have left here on my agenda is I want everybody to have a safe Halloween, you know? Kids have a good time and we want the parents protected. Everybody that's driving around, I want to make sure that, uh, you're watchful of kids in the streets everywhere. I will, at this time, open up a council. Anybody in the council want to say anything at this time? There being none, is anybody in our audience who'd like to say anything this time? Okay, I'll entertain a motion for German. I have a motion.